Rose, if you take your role.
Sure. Ms. Flanagan. Mr. Barrett, present. Mr. Friedman.
Present.
And I'm here as well.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the June 12, 2023. I believe there were some corrections that have been made. Anyone care to move?
We approve the minutes from the June 12, 23.
Nice second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Minister approved. Starting with the agenda, case number 2023 dash zero six MA. My understanding, the applicant wishes to bring some matter to our attention before we start to hear. I presume you are from the applicant.
You presume correctly.
You would give us your name, your affiliation with the applicant.
I am an attorney for the applicant. I along with Tom Tepe. My name is Sophia Holly and I work at KMK Law. If I may start with my comments.
Please.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate all of the support we've received from staff. I've been in close contact with Jeff and I met with him last week. Late on Friday, he provided some comments with respect to staff proposals and we would like some time to figure out how to incorporate and respond to those as best as possible. There's a lot of different people involved with respect to how the site layout is going to be. And so in order to allow us to have enough time to respond it correctly to that, we would ask for a one month continuance so that we can come up with a proposal.
Anyone on the question have any comments or questions about that? We'll entertain that request to continue the matter which would go over until the August meeting of the zoning commission which the date is.
August fourteenth.
I'll move we continue case number 2023 dash zero six MA until the August 2023 meeting of the zoning commission. All in favor? So the matter will be continued. If anyone was here for that case, which is the property on Montgomery Road, the shops of Kenwood. That hearing is being continued until the August meeting. You're welcome to stay. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you wish, or certainly can leave if you wish. Yes. Well, there's nothing said that we can't continue it.
Forever?
A number of times. I don't want to say forever. I don't see that. I don't see that happening. But I think there's been enough interest in this matter. And from our standpoint, there's enough issues that have been raised and need to be seriously addressed. That I can understand why the applicant wants more time. So we've decided to continue the matter until August. But I would expect that we're going to have a hearing that night. I mean, the continuance is not automatic. The continuance is not guaranteed to the applicant. I think everyone will look poorly upon it if we come again and they're not ready to proceed.
And staff will send out another letter informing the residents of the new meeting date in August. August, it'll be August fourteenth.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Karen, do you have a question too? Okay. You know, if anyone who's here for that would just believe, you know, you're free to do so. Are you free to stay for the rest of the meeting? The next item on the agenda is case number 2023 dash 10 P1. The applicant is Dries Holmes. Property at 11216 Gideon Lane. The request is for a PUD one. Jeff, you give us an update on that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The subject property is 11216 Gideon Lane. The applicant is Dries Holmes. The current zoning is a single family. And their request is a PUD one. It's the proposed use of the single family subdivision with the presence of one panhandle lot. I'm on straight a single family zone property. Two separate subdivisions are being applied for on either side of Gideon Lane for a total of 13 single family homes by trees. The homes will include a mixture of high quality building materials with stone brick and siding. I can show those at the end here. With Gideon Lane kind of being the line of demarcation, proposed to be developed to the right or the, I guess, if you're coming towards Snyder Road. In the direction of Snyder Road, Sycamore Woods West comprises a total of eight single family residential lots. And it's just mentioned for context, well, the subject of the case is Sycamore Woods East comprising a total of five single family lots. Because of lot two, Sycamore Woods East, it's a panhandle lot of PUD one approval is required solely for the Sycamore Woods East subdivision, which is that five parcels. So if you're looking at the, this image, it's, it's this, these parcels here on the right side of the street to the east of Gideon Lane. According to MSD sufficient sewer availability is present according to Greater Cincinnati Water Works, a new water service will need to be run to a site. If approved, depending on sales, Dries mentions that construction is anticipated to culminate in mid 2025. Terms of the land use plan, the proposed use fits the lane proposal of land use plan, which is single family residential. On the relevant code, section three dash five point one six panhandle lots. That's why we're here. Panhandle lot shall not be permitted. Except for when they are part of a recorded residential subdivision containing four more lots and have been approved through by the township zoning commission through the PUD one process. This process of the minimum street front required for panhandle lots is determined by the Hamilton County subdivision regulations and lots must meet all lot area and setback requirements for the underlying zoning district. As for analysis, the presence of the 2.396 acre panhandle lot, which is lot two, is the nexus for this case. Staff use the township's panhandle PUD one process. It's an opportunity to review design practices in which panhandles are deployed. To the right on the report, I kind of showed an example of what I call a circuit board style side arrangement development where a number of houses are clustered together to avoid a street. That's not what is occurring in this case. It's a singular panhandle. Sycamore Woods East satisfies the minimum street front required for panhandle lots, which is 20 feet as determined by the Hamilton County subdivision regulations. All lots meet the lot area setback requirements for the A zoning district, and that's measured at the front setback line. So it's 100 feet wide. Staff fees, the site arrangement of Sycamore Woods East is not, is not a substantial PUD one request. Site arrangement would not substantially alter the character of the neighborhood for the following reasons. Staff agrees with the applicant's characterization that the existing parcels adjacent to the project all being located in the A zoning district are totally unaffected by the proposed panhandle lot. The, there's very limited location available for a home site on lot two. So that's kind of the need for its location. You can see it right here. I would also note that the applicant notes that other parcels would not be affected. That's because clearing limits are proposed to be such to provide sufficient natural screening. Two staff agrees with the applicant's characterization that the irregular shape and unique physical condition of the property, which is, was not self-created as such that the rear 2.3 acres of the site have no developmental developmental opportunity without the use of a panhandle. At the request of staff, the applicant has taken due care to include mounting and landscaping to provide buffering between lots two and three. And the drainage has been such to account for this. So there's sufficient landscaping and mounting here to provide screening between the two lots. I'm locating the Sycamore Community School District, Sycamore Woods East and West for that matter. On the other side of the road will provide additional housing diversity for the residents of Sycamore Township. The majority of the housing in Sycamore Township is either the Deer Park, Princeton or Indian Hill School Districts. Fifth and finally, the applicant has worked closely with the township on infrastructure matters. The Sycamore Township Maintenance Department fully supports the proposal and the site arrangement of the infrastructure. So here's just the kind of the plan. I'll show you the typical building elevations by trees. I guess this is called the Bennett. So I'll just flip through just to kind of give you a flavor of what's proposed. So with that, the right case here. Staff's recommendation recommends approval of the PUD one with the following conditions. The landscaping on lot three shall be maintained in healthy condition. Two, given the modern realities of supply chain shortages, a condition allowing a validity period of two years starting at the date of July today, July 10, 2023. Approval unless a building permit is issued. In the event that a different housing vendor were to build on a given lot for future considerations, zoning district gets proposed housing styles and site arrangement, the lots shall be substantially consistent with the plans proposed in this addition, in this application. So if something were to happen and they were to sell lots to another vendor, the vendor would basically have to follow the proposal. No cell tower shall be built on lots that cover Sycamore Woods East and Sycamore Woods West. And then for the clearing limits specified in the plan shall be adhered to. With that, that's all I have.
Anyone have any questions?
Okay, one, you reference on your recommendations as far as cell towers on Sycamore Woods West. My understanding is this PUD is only for the east.
And I, and I thought about that as I wrote that the board would have the power to, I think, grant its reach over to west. You could make that as part of your recommendation. You could also argue that Sycamore Woods West affects Sycamore Woods East because there's, you know, there's the view shed and you could see what's across the street. So it has direct effect on it. By virtue of, of your approval, you could make note that this deed would also apply for the, the eight lots across the street and make that reach. If you chose not to, that would be fine too.
I'm just concerned about the next. Because sure, but there's nothing connecting this to those parcels legally, I don't think, right? This PUD is only east, as you said, you know, so.
It would, it would be an interesting legal question. If, if the board chose not to put that in the, in the condition, I would certainly understand why. It's a bit of a creative condition that what I think would have to be eventually litigated if it came to that, but.
Kind of objective, I'm just.
I wanted to just the first condition that you mentioned. Obviously, you want to keep all landscaping and healthy condition, I'm sure. So your focus is really.
You speak up.
All right. Sorry about that. I always sound loud inside my head, but evidently not. My, my question for Jeff is the first condition noted is that the landscaping on lot three shall be maintained in healthy condition. And obviously, you want all of them to be maintained that way. But your focus, I assume, is the buffering.
Yeah, it's, it's the buffering.
I said the buffering landscape between lots two and three shall be maintained in healthy condition is really what you're.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And the procedure we'll use, if there's anyone here for the applicant, will speak first to present any additional comments they have. And then we'll open it up to the audience. Anyone who wishes to make a comment or ask a question will go around the room to do that. So if anyone is here from the applicant, if you step up to the podium, give us your name and affiliation.
Hello, I'm Matt Maines with Dries Holmes. That's 211 Grandview Drive, Fort Mitchell, Kentucky. You know, really, I don't have too much to present. It's pretty straightforward as far as the plan itself. We're in agreement with the staff analysis and the recommendations put forth. You know, again, it is a good opportunity for some new housing in the Sycamore School District, and that's what initially attracted us to the piece of land. The size of the lots and the size of the homes are well within the underlying zoning for this. And really, at, at the end of the day, the reason it's a PUD and the reason we're in front of you is for that panhandle lot. And we think it's good use of the, how panhandles are created and why they're created to use pieces of land such as this and situations like this. So, you know, again, we, we don't have any further comments other than we're just available for any questions or comments that you might have. I will tell you just a little bit of a background. The preliminary plan on the west side was approved by Hamilton County, the Regional Planning Commission earlier this week, and we have no intentions of putting cell towers or anything. It's going to be the eight single family lots that are being proposed there.
Yeah. Anyone have any questions for the applicant? Sir, what, what's the price range that you anticipate on this housing?
It's always hard. You know, all of our houses are built to, you know, purchase. We would start at 800, but you know, in the school district with these, I would say they'd be well over a million dollars.
And one other, one other question. I know one time, I don't know if it still exists, but at one time there was a grave that was on the north side of the pond that's there. You know, that's on the properties that you're acquiring. I know the grave marker is there. I don't know if the grave is there or not, or if it's on the property that you're acquired.
Well, I don't believe it is because we've had a we've had a archaeological survey done on the site and nothing of concern was found. So it is, they do the site report in the desktop study and going through that whole process. So.
Yeah, I mean, looking at the overhead, I, it's hard to say just looking at the drawing exactly where the, the line is, but
Right.
I would be concerned if that's there on somebody's.
Sure, sure. Yeah. Um, like I said, we've done an archaeological study. I'll look into it a little further and make sure. But yeah, we were, it was reported back and nothing was found as far as a grave site on our property, the property that we're looking to purchase.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience, if you have any comments or any questions, if you would step up to the podium and give us your name and.
How y'all doing? My name is Jim Meister. I live at 11392 Gideon Lane. I do have a couple of questions on it. And number one, the majority of that property is in Sycamore Township. Some of it is in Princeton and you're going to zone it for Sycamore Township. We want to see if we can get our properties own Sycamore Township being right next to it while they're doing the zoning. So I don't know if this is the right meeting for this, but I did want to bring it to the public record that all of everybody, everybody on our street would like to be zoned into Sycamore Township along with the new subdivision.
Yeah. And sir, I think maybe you're talking about the Sycamore Community Schools.
Yes, yes, sir. Okay, question number two is when they start cutting all them trees down, the wall goes to a certain point and ends back in the back. So when you start cutting them trees down, what kind of noise barrier are we going to be putting in to cut the noise from coming into our subdivision? Is there any record of how they're going to do that?
From my understanding, I think you're probably talking about trees that are on the west side of Gideon and not on this particular.
Yeah, there's a, there's a wall going around everything except that area back because there was no houses in there. So they never finished the wall up for that.
And again, that, that property is not here explicitly before us tonight, if I'm understanding correctly. You're, you're talking about the trees that are on the west side of Gideon, not on the.
Yes, so we're not even going to talk about that side of the street tonight. Okay. And when we're going to talk about the other side of the street, so we can bring that to their attention also.
The, the Sycamore Woods West or the west side of this, the other subdivisions approved by right, so it wouldn't be subject to a public meeting.
So we are going to have a public meeting on the other street too?
On, on the other side of the street, the eight lots? No, because it's, it's, it's being proposed under straight underlying zoning. So there's, it's, it's being built to code under the existing zoning. So there would not be a public meeting. The purpose for tonight's meeting is to review Sycamore Woods East or the five lots proposed, given the presence of that panhandle lot.
And those are part that's in both Princeton and Sycamore School District.
All, all of the lots proposed tonight are in the Sycamore Township, but they're also in Sycamore School District.
And Princeton School District also.
None of the lots proposed are in Princeton.
Part of the line don't run down through Princeton at all.
At all.
Check that and see. Did you ever know, thank you on me bringing your attention?
And I, I would add that with the Princeton District, Google, I looked what Google says. Google says the west side of the road is Princeton, but the east side is Sycamore. So I looked into that further and Google happened to be wrong. The Hamilton County Auditor has everything as Sycamore.
My case, because there's something wrong and somebody's changing something somewhere along the way. So.
I don't think, I, I think everything is up to date with the Hamilton County Auditor, which is Sycamore School District for every lot. Perhaps Google might have it wrong, but Google is not a governing public bodies.
Okay, so what's our next up to trying to get us zone in the Sycamore School District?
Well, um, prior to the meeting, you had this question and I didn't know. And I did a quick just Google search of it. And I think there's a 3311 dash 22. You might, you could look it up, but it's the answer, it's called transfer of a school district territory. And it talks about a, a governing board of an educational service center. This body is a zoning commission. So it's really wouldn't have the, the, you know, the power to do anything with that related to school districts. It looks like, you know, it's the educational service center of Hamilton County that you might.
I think we tried calling them and they never gave us any response. So calling, we left messages with them, no response whatsoever from them. So we've never, we didn't get anything back from them at all. Even making calls, left messages, no return calls, no nothing out of it.
But our zoning commission, Sycamore Township, we don't have any authority to change.
Okay.
School district lines. So there is a statutory procedure for going. We're, we're not the body that does.
I understand. I do have one more question. When we first bought our house on Gideon Lane, the street belonged to the residents on the street. We paid to have the street put in. We paid to have the water lines put in. And so all that was paid for by the residents on the street. Now that we're going to have to share that and we paid for it already, is there any reimbursement coming back to us for the money that we paid for the street?
I'm unaware of that. Again, it's not something that this body would control. I have no idea when that was, who handled it or anything else.
Yeah, I don't know how you go about trying to retrieve money back. I do know down in Aurora, Indiana, we put in a 3,000 feet of sewer line going down the highway to our house. And if anybody taps into it, we do get a percentage of that money back for how many tap into the lines. So I know down there you get a percentage back from what you paid into it. If you put the whole line in. We did put the whole street in and we did put the whole water line in. So if they're going to be tapping into our street, the residents on the street, are we going to get reimbursed for any of that?
Can't answer that.
And who do we ask to get reimbursed?
You might check with the, I think, Cincinnati Water Works provides the water there.
Well, that was Sycamore Township to put the water lines in. And so we actually paid them for the water lines in the street.
Correct. I can't answer the question. I don't know.
Okay. I got one more question. If they're going to put in a gas line, and you might not be able to answer this far either. Is there any way they could put the gas line down our street to tap into their gas line also, so we can have gas down the street? I don't.
Yeah. Quick answers, yes. So obviously, these are high priced homes. We wanted to bring gas to them, these houses. So they are tapping a fair amount north and we are, it is a fair amount of money that we're bringing the gas line down. So yeah, anyone who is bring it down from the north. I don't know how far it is and we're bringing it down to our property.
North, north, okay.
Yes, yeah. So any of those people will have an opportunity to tap into that gas line.
Do we get ahold of you for that or?
That's, it's all through Duke at that point. So.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Anyone else have any comments or question?
Robert Pusher, Gideon Lane. You said that Metropolitan Sewers said there was sewers on the road already? In your statement?
I, I would defer to, to Dries to address the sewer.
Well, I'm just saying, what you statement that you read said Metropolitan Sewers said there was sewers there already. So.
I will pull up the concept letter from, it's not that letter. I don't have the concept letter with me, but Mr. Maines from Dries can address that.
Yeah, if you want to go back to the previous plan, their sewer, the way MSD works is their sewer availability for the site. Where we're tapping into the sewer is to the, to the east side there along that property line. So that's where the sewer availability is. And that's where we're that's where everything's being collected. We are adding a sewer down the side of the road to service the rest of the, the development.
Do you want to go across Gideon to the west side too?
Yes. Yeah, yeah.
Any other comments? Give us your name, please.
Kathy Lefivers, 11221 Marlet Drive. I am affected by that triangle right there. Okay, in the back from, from lot two and three, I know you're saying that you're going to have appropriate landscaping between the new house of two and three. What about behind that unit two? What's happening with all those woods back there? Are you tearing them all down?
So, so the questions would have to be directed to the board.
Oh, sorry. Are you tearing those down?
Yeah. So if you zoom in there, that dash line is sort of a clearing limits. And you know, the reason being is because we're putting in a basin to collect stormwater. And then we have to have our sewer go back there. Aside from that, that triangle, none of that has been cleared or none of the woods are being touched. It's, I, we want to keep as many trees on both sides of the road as we possibly can. So on the west side, there's still going to be a huge swath of trees between the road and our houses. We could never sell a house with the freeway in the back. And then as much as we can keep here, even to the point where we'll go out and walk the site. And if there's big trees that are right on the edge, we'll try to keep as much as we possibly can.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
It's Dan Adelman on Brittany Woods Lane. I guess I may be rehashing a topic, but the concept of sound and noise, has there been any sort of, I guess, study or impact of what the neighborhoods that are shielded from the highway would the impact to, to the areas that will be somewhat partially cleared? I mean, I just find it odd to have an area with a sound barrier. We're not talking about that right now, but no one's ever going to talk about it. Have an area with a sound barrier that's not complete and sites being cleared without review of the impact. So just want to ask.
There's nothing that we've received that shows any sound studies because it affects any of the property back here, you know? Attention of the single family residents. Something is permitted on this property. There's nothing before us that has to do with the sound study.
I mean, I understand, I understand that this conversation has limits, but it's also in the context of something larger happening. And so I just, and there's no other forum to bring this to. So suppose that's the question. Is there, who owns the sound barriers on Gideon on the west side further north?
Those are, those are ODOT sound barriers on the, along the highway.
And is there any sort of connective tissue that Sycamore Township has with ODOT to think about where those exist and where they don't and what makes sense?
I would say it's a natural phenomenon of development to have green space such as this next to area that areas have developed. The developer could share their experience with, with, with issues in clearing. I'm not a clearing expert, but you know, generally you're going to have areas along major highways that are green spaces. And then, you know, one day they develop. There are, you know, township regulations, you know, that restrict. There are, you know, township regulations, you know, that restrict development uh sounds, you know, from, you know, during the evening or night hours. Uh but I think what you're talking about is the static sound from that highway coming forward um from this development. And and there's really nothing that that covers that. It's the applicant has a right to develop their land if it conforms to zoning rules and regulations and this this wouldn't be covered by that. But I I I see your point. It's green space uh that's being developed, but um it doesn't violate any zoning rules. And.
I know. A little bit. Only to the only to the extent that those are ODOT's sound barriers, they don't intend to lengthen them or improve them or change them or anything. Why there's no, you know, exact science to it or studies that we've done. You know, we're, like I said, trying to keeping as many many of the trees as we possibly can. And you know, for us, it's a big investment that we just, you know, from our experience, we don't think it is going to be detrimental to the site. Otherwise, we certainly wouldn't be kind of moving forward with uh our developments, which are going to be the most impacted by the sound.
Sir.
Uh my question is, sorry, Rich Luongo, one-one-two-five-one, Marlet Drive. Right at the very corner of the lot is our Teddy Corners, our lot right there, or yeah. And there, as Kathy had asked about the trees, so obviously I'm very concerned about that as well, but also is there any, is there, has there been any study done to since to determine the impact of changes in the way drainage happens in that area and if it will be affecting the homeowners on our left drive for us?
Sure, yeah, this is one thing and our engineer here, Jim Watson with MSD can can also address this. Uh the whole reason we're putting the basin in there is to uh catch any stormwater, any additional stormwater from the roofs that are being put in. So we're not putting any new road, but obviously there's houses and pavements being put in and they go through the calculations and it's approved by the township, it's approved by the uh the county.
Public Works.
Yeah, the Public Works and uh so it is definitely uh you know, addressed and uh we're picking up the swamp sewer and making drainage at least as good, if not better than it was.
And one other quick question then, somewhat related. So I think we heard that this the we're going to tie into the storm sewer that runs between the properties on Marlet.
The sanitary.
The sanitary. And and has there been, has there been evaluated to see if that's capable of handling this additional?
Yeah, yes, it has. That's that's what we go through through MSD. We ask for a letter of capacity and they review the pipe sizing and the downstream sizing and MSD, as much as anyone does all the calculations to make sure the thirteen houses that we're adding, it has the capacity to take that storm, the sanitary sewer flow. And they have approved it.
Thirteen houses, some on both sides of the street?
Yeah, because all the storm, because the eight houses on the west and the five houses on the east are all going for that same sanitary swamp sewer.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Thank you again. Anyone on the commission care to make any motion?
I'll move that we consider case two oh two-three dash ten P one. Let's just
Without just right now, just get the case out. A second.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or any? I know the staff have made certain recommendations. Anyone care to make any addition to those?
I guess regarding bull point one landscaping, a lot three, I agree with Spiney in earlier, the reference that in a buffer between the two lots. Landscaping buffer.
So perhaps the buffering landscaping between lots two and three shall be maintained in healthy condition.
Yeah.
Just for just for ease, if it's the buffer landscaping on lot three, which just describes to that, uh we just add the word buffer before landscaping with that. It notes the lot on there.
Kind of like between lots two and three.
Okay.
It may just be
For landscaping.
For clarity.
And then, as I brought up earlier, I was just concerned about including Sycamore Woods West in here too. Mechanism.
Well, I I think personally, I think that we could recommend that. Trustees are going to hear this now.
You 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 could make a determination that Sycamore Woods West is in fact part of this beauty one and just lump that in. The the thought I had for that was where these could be shotgun lots with with uh uh connection or they'll be adjoining ODOT right of way. And my thought was, you know, what if in twenty years a a good cell tower developer approaches one of these lots, kind of a big shotgun lot that you know, perhaps they're looking for, it's like, oh yeah, we'll sell you the back forty and you can join it with this and then they have access to the it's probably not going to happen, but it it was just a, you know, with that ODOT right-of-way access, that was the thought behind it.
Well, I'm probably at least for legal ramifications. Or, yeah.
Can we say something like no cell towers shall be built on the lots that encompass Sycamore Woods East and the board recommends a similar provision for Sycamore Woods West. At least it's a recommendation in there without us ordering something that we might not be able to do.
The way it's reading, it's it's saying both Sycamore Woods East and the other one are both.
So we believe it is, it's a chance that it's.
Ultimately, I think what will happen is if it were ever to come to fruition, it probably won't, but if it could, it would be up to the township to decide, the trustees at that time, whoever they are this uh would be, it would be their decision rather to fight that lawsuit or not, it would go, and then they would have the choice.
My inclination would just let it ride as is.
Yeah, it's already in the recommendation. That was the biggest concern. Anything else? It's fine. I know it's maybe a small concern, but I I brought it up earlier. We could add a condition that if there in fact is a grave on the subject property that it will be properly moved to another location, so it's not on private, privately owned residential lot.
It'll be properly disinterred.
Right, disinterred.
Does that take care of the reinterment?
Or the, or the, yeah, that's a better word, the reinterment. So in Ohio, townships are generally required to maintain cemeteries. So I would just say that the uh if there's a reinterment necessary, that it would be up to the the home builder, the developer to do that, not the township.
I think you could put a note on there that be you know.
So if something maybe, if there is a grave, it must be properly reinterred by the developer.
I think so.
Any other comment?
Time to move to that my motion is to include five, three, fours, uh bull points proposed by staff including modifications to bull point one, clarifying that this is the buffer on lot three between lots two and three. And then also adding a one item that uh if a grave is found on the property, it will be properly reinterred by the.
A second that one shouldn't be.
This one again?
Yes.
And yes.
Okay. That is the recommendation. Uh thank you all. Hey, the uh the next case is case number twenty-two-three dash eleven MA. The applicant is Atlantic Sign Company for property located at one-zero-eight-six-nine Montgomery Road. Skyline location, major adjustment to PUD.
Yeah. Thank you. So the request is a major adjustment to a PUD that originated from case two thousand seventeen oh five P two. It's the proposal of two additional skyline and cap signs in the southern elevation. Uh for this discussion, the where the AB is, I I realize it's not appropriate, but we'll call that the southern elevation. The eastern elevation faces the uh ODOT infrastructure. The northern elevation faces two-seventy-five and car dealerships over here and then to the to the uh west is the office park over here, just to just to orient ourselves. A major adjustment is proposed with P D P P D two that overlays the subject property at ten-eight-six-nine Montgomery Road. Skyline proposes two new wall signs on the southern elevation above the skyline drive-through window. A forty-nine-point-two-eight square foot skyline wall sign and a six-square-foot pickup window sign above the drive-through window. Um currently, that pickup sign is there. It just, it actually wasn't a part of the original case, so this kind of adds it. So this is kind of uh what's there now and then what's proposed. The multi-tenant building at uh ten-eight-six-nine Montgomery Road is approved in case twenty-seventeen oh five P two as mentioned. Uh related to the wall sign. Let's say two. So the south elevation of the where the pickup window is located, so on the on the original conditions, the uh the approval of that case was silent on whether there would be a wall sign there, nor would there, nor was there a picture of a wall sign. There is a condition allowing a wall sign on the north elevation facing the highway, presumably an end cap for the tenant on the north side of the building. As of the writer report, it's Sherwin-Williams, which is on that side. Um in the view of staff, there are two matters for review. One is Skyline's major adjustment proposal of two wall signs on the southern elevation. Um but so the second matter is to perhaps clean up a few items with the original approval of case two thousand seventeen oh five P two, um as noted. Well, I I know in the report that we'll recommend approval of Skyline's um southern elevation proposal, but um staff recommends, I would recommend a new condition that unless signage is is adjusted in the conditions of case two thousand seventeen oh five P two or via this major justice case that all other signage of the uh subject property shall be governed by the E District zoning regulation. So the current, we pull those up now. Bear with me. I don't know if it's safe, right? My apologies. The the current case, or the two thousand seventeen oh five P two case did not specify anything related to signage. It it we were starting. There we go. Um it just noted basically a picture, so there's really nothing that states, you know, that it's the retail signage. So I would propose a new condition that allows for that. And then number two, um condition six calls for a sign to be allowed on the north elevation. I would propose a change that the building sign on the north side of the elevation is permitted. Um but add only for the end cap tenant on the north side of the building plus I seventy-five, such an end cap wall sign square footage is limited to the linear length of that elevation. So for one square, three square foot would be allowed for each linear foot. For analysis, um so I'll start with the skyline proposal and then as I kind of kind of butchered that, but there's two cleanups on existing conditions that I would want to clean up. Um on the skyline, most sign is a proposed south end cap skyline wall sign is supposed to be of similar square footage as the existing east elevation skyline wall sign on the front of the building. So that existing east sign is forty-nine-point-four-one square feet. Um the proposed sign is forty-nine-point-two-eight. Um at the junction of Montgomery Road, I know that this is a retail center, it's at a unique location, given it's it's a right-in-and-right-out access on Montgomery Road. I mean, given that the lot is inset one lot from the intersection of Hets and Montgomery Road, so due to the increased difficulty of ingress egress, there could be sufficient reason to allow for an end cap wall sign for skyline. I note, um it was kind of out of experience, so I used to live in Blue Ash, but some skyline patrons approached the skyline by the I two seventy-five eastbound off-ramp. So the only way to safely proceed to the skyline is to exit the I two seventy-five off-ramp on the Montgomery Road. Travel down Head Strive and make a right into the office park that joins the subject property skyline. Um so the proposed south elevation skyline wall sign could positively assist with a bit of wayfinding from I two seventy-five patrons. The proposed skyline south end cap wall sign, the forty-nine-point-two-eight square foot sign proposed in the pickup uh window, which is on the south end cap sign. Note that it's not out of proportion with the scale of the building, the south elevation of the of the building is seventy-eight uh feet in linear length. So if we apply the uh E District standard, it's basically one square foot for each linear foot. It would be in proportion. I get there's two signs, but that that pickup window sign is a bit of a wayfinding sign. Just to clarify and 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 summarize, um I would also propose an amendment to condition six, which um note the original condition six from two thousand seventeen dash oh five P two, which basically it puts some meat on the bone, related to that north side of the building sign will in the condition that it's the building sign on the north side of the building is permitted, and that's all it says. Add the following language, and for the end cap tenant of the building close to I seventy-five, such an end cap wall sign square footage is limited to the linear length of the elevation. Uh one square foot for each linear foot in length. And then finally, as mentioned, just adding clarification, adding a new condition for the uh P D two that um notes that unless signage is adjusted in the conditions of 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 case two thousand seventeen oh five P two or this case, um that signage shall be governed by the E District zoning regulation. Resolution regulations. With that, are there any questions?
Questions right now. If anyone is here for the applicant, if you can step up and give us your name and your affiliation.
My name's Brooke Alini and I'm with Atlantic Sign Company, uh two-three-two-eight Florence Avenue. He's basically covered everything. They just want that extra sign. This is all Skyline's, I know why he's trying to fix up everything, but we're just looking for signs. And we're just, I don't even, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think that the pickup is actually just vinyl. No, I don't think it's a cabinet or anything, because I think we're just replacing what was already there that's peeling off.
We would still consider it a sign.
Okay, we just, I'm just saying we're not installing anything new, I guess. It's going on the existing canopy that's already there.
Is this a lighted sign or just flat?
It's it's illuminated. It's exactly the same sign as that's on the other side, same size, same everything. No, that's where Sherman Williams says, they can't, they can't put one there. Sherman Williams doesn't want to do a duo advertising. It's pretty straightforward. Thanks.
All right, anyone care to make a?
We consider case number twenty-two-three dash eleven F A with two conditions noted.
We consider case number twenty twenty-three dash eleven FA with two conditions noted in the staff report we received.
I'll second, second, any other comments or additions to that?
Uh, yeah. I guess, playing along with your approach to the north elevation, I wonder if this sign we're proving here tonight should be specified to be someone available for the south. In case there's a later on in occupancy, which will be down, but that happens.
I think by, by virtue of the case, by the proposal, you're kind of creating a condition via, um, that's the proposal, but, um, I think that uh, you could certainly go above and beyond and note that, uh, the let's say skyline went out of business, I don't think they will at this location, it's, it's gone, but, uh, Olive Garden wanted to go in, that whoever the tenant is there could have the same side proportion size sign, uh, at that location, that, that, this approval runs with that, uh, end cap.
Swearing, I need to have a guess versus their tenant, the fourth tenant, that's what he understood.
So you could.
Skyline decides they, they would, if they can make money by leasing that sign to someone else.
So, so, so the, um, you could do it several ways, but you could, you could put a condition on that, um, that the, uh, approved skyline end cap sign, southern elevation sign runs with the, uh, PUD two, um, so that that end cap, that southern end cap will run with that southern end cap tenant space, whatever it is. I'm sure, uh, the board will say for a little.
Yeah. So, and you will modify your.
I do, but I'm not sure I can praise that one.
Okay, uh, yeah, I moved that we add one more condition onto our approval, um, that the subject, uh, sign on the south elevation of the building, uh, I think the subject sign for this, uh, modification. Reflects the south tenant name only.
That's funny.
So I would, sure, second.
Any other comments? Take the, uh.
Laurel, Ms. Flanagan?
Hi.
Mr. Barrett?
Hi.
It's true for you.
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well.
It says goes to the trustees direct.
It will on August first. There, it, it, there is, it would be with the trustees on August first, because it's a major adjustment.
Do I need to do anything?
Nope.
Okay, so I need to shut the meeting?
I, I would, yeah.
Could you take one back one message to Mr. Bizzler?
Oh, yeah.
Tell me keep the place open later in the night.
He was going to come, but he, he couldn't make it tonight, so, but also when I email him, I'll let him know, we need skyline later. I live downtown, so I can get him.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now to trustees, anybody that want to tell?
I'm, I have nothing further to report.
Our next meeting is August fourteenth, where the shop's agenda would have either split up or shut.
Very well.
All right. Your data book is good here.
I'll, I'll make a motion, Richard. One second.
All there. I.